So make sure that, yeah, we've all done that.
Good evening. So like she said, our BizTown unit is the longest unit that's been worked with in the sixth grade. It actually came fro- it started in elementary schools and we took it over when the sixth grade moved to the middle school. BizTown does, it is for a junior achievement program that gives students a chance to see what it's like to be an adult. They get to have a, do an interview, get a job, go and work in a simulation at JA BizTown. And they have two floors, so they're able to, in their new spaces, are able to accommodate all of our students for both cores on the same day. It takes weeks of learning in class and combined with a one-day visit to that simulated experience. They have financial literacy, community and economy, work and career readiness, and then some business management. And those all take class, take part in different classes. Many different companies sponsor different businesses at BizTown. Great Clips is one of them, Delta Airlines, lots of different insurance companies. I don't know what ECMC Group is, but there's a lot of them there that, that people are sponsoring that also are ones that we know of. So, alright, so what goes into this BizTown unit? Individuals and societies, talks about their citizenship, free enterprise, a lot of talk about business happens in social individuals, individuals and societies, business management, and then an election. And I believe Ren wanted to talk about her experience in her Individuals and Societies class, because she was really excited about what happened in there.
Hi. Um, so-
Come really close to the microphone.
So, um, I think one of my favorite parts about BizTown is, in the beginning, we got a, like, look at lots of different jobs and, like, see, like, which type of jobs, like, we would like. And then, like, we picked our top three, and then we would have an interview. Um, I think some high schoolers came down and we talked to them about, like, why we think we should get the jobs that we picked. And then, also, in Individuals and Society, we voted for our mayor for BizTown. And so, kids who wanted to be mayor made, like, little videos, and then we would all, um, vote on that, like, who we wanted in our grade to be the mayor. And, yeah, that was probably my favorite part.
Okay, so like Ren said, in Language and Literature, they did some career exploration. So they got to see what types of jobs were at BizTown, along with what things would they be interested in in their futures. They wrote, they wrote resumes, filled out job applications, and had a job interview. And that's where Mr. Castillo comes in, because we have some high schoolers that get involved in BizTown also.
Yeah. I had the good fortune, actually, I taught sixth grade, the first year I came into South St. Paul. And so, that was actually part of the business unit, or the business class of this as well. And so, really familiar, actually. Rihanna was one of my students in that. And, just from that perspective, if I can just take a second, no, I saw a lot of kids get really excited about actually exploring the different jobs there. And one of the things I found out as, as a business teacher is, you know, you can say, "I want to work in, in climate change." But they think there's one job in climate change, right? And so then, you know, as they explore these things, they're finding out, there's a lot of jobs, you know, if you work for Delta, or you work for, you know, in finance even. And they're seeing a lot of jobs. So it's, I think it's a great introduction to that, to open up the world to them. In terms of my students, so I actually had students from my store management class this year that participated in this. As part of the store management class, actually, I interviewed them for jobs in the store. And they got to wear the other, you know, the, go on the other side of it. And one of the things that I talked to one of my students today, Mackenzie Jung, she said to me, you know, "The really cool thing about interviewing them is, I actually had a lot of control about whether they felt comfortable or not." You know, she said, "At the beginning, they were really nervous, and then I just kind of made it more friendly and kind of put a different spin on it." And so, my students actually got to understand that the process of interviewing much better than they had before, which I thought was a really neat experience. A lot of them had gone to BizTown, and they actually said, "That was the funnest part of their sixth grade experience was actually BizTown." So they, they were excited to kind of participate in again. And, as they said, they walked on memory lane. And so they're like, "Oh, I wish I could go to that," you know, again. So, yeah, thanks.
And then we have Callie here, who did, she is a high schooler who did some of the interviews, so she's going to tell you her experience with being an interviewer.
So I have a little brother, actually, in sixth grade. And, so he got to go. And I know Linda's son, Bubba, he's, they're all friends. And I didn't get to interview any of the, my brother's friends, but I did interview two, a girl and a boy jersey, and I can't remember the boy's name. But they were so nervous to start out. And I'm like, "You know what? I was just as nervous as you were." And I am also, I'm working on getting a job, and I'm working on getting an internship, which I have to go through many interviews. And I've just figured out what I told them is to not, "Don't mess with your fingers, like, bouncing your knee." And I have to remember that for myself, too. And so, just seeing their smile on their face when they were telling me all their interests in the jobs. And I was like, "So what jobs you guys want to do?" And they were, like, listing off, like, more than three. And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, guys, like, this, you guys must really want to go?" They're like, "Yes, I really want these jobs." And I had to put downs on some of the other kid that I had interviewed, that he wasn't a right fit, which I felt really bad for. But, like, he, I know he ended up, I ended up seeing him and her again. They're all like, "I had so much fun with the job you guys, you got me into. I actually really liked it more than I probably would the other one." And so, I just, like, felt like, you know, I was happy for them, because they always have so much fun. And Joe, he still comes around, he's like, "I remember this one time at BizTown, I was, I saw one of my friends and we, he, like, dropped something, and we were all laughing." And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, Joe, that's so good." Like, I don't even remember going to BizTown really, because that was a while ago. But I know their place is a lot nicer than what we went. We were at a different location, and it was all kind of just one big circle instead of two different levels, which, I mean, it doesn't really matter. But I just, it's just so cool. And you can, like, take what you took from BizTown. Like, I actually knew how to write a check when I have written my first check after getting my credit card and my debit card. And I'm just like, "You know what? I was thinking BizTown might be boring, but then I went and I actually had fun. And I'm actually remembering a lot of stuff I used to do, and, like, how they explain taxes. And when I had my previous job, I had to actually go along with my dad to do the taxes. And it kind of helped me push through, like, just normal life stuff that I didn't even think about until this year, which I finally got to put in, get put in place. So."
That's great. That's great. Alright, so this is Callie interviewing Austin, that's his name. And then Jeffrey's in the background there, too, in the other pictures. These are the interviews, they get set up in the hallways, in classrooms, so they just get paired off. And it's a whole, like, you know, everybody in the corps knows it's happening. It's cute to see some of them get really dressed up for it. There's, the boys come in their ties and their suits sometimes, so-
Awesome.
It's, it's a really cool process that happens, showing them how to prepare for interviews. So this year, we didn't have a design class that had all sixth graders, so we had kind of thrown it out there, who can do the personal finance piece of it. And our language carousel teacher, Mr. Kretschmer, said he could do it. So he did an awesome job tying his French and Spanish carousel into personal finance. They learned to write checks, they learned to do the interest and banking and withdrawals and deposits and credit versus debit. And he kind of went with some food truck information, or food trucks, to talk about their businesses. And Ms. Julia is going to come up and talk about her experiences in the language carousel and how it tied BizTown together for her.
Hi, I'm Julia. And one thing that helped me, because I was a CFO of a construction center. And as a CFO, you have to really work on writing checks and banking and keeping track of a lot of numbers. So when we learned how to actually put all the information that we learned in his class to BizTown, it helped. And we learned how to use credit cards, and we learned how to bank, which I thought was cool. Writing checks is one of my favorite parts. You gotta just write random numbers down. If you want a million dollars, you just put a million dollars. Didn't really matter, so.
It will, it will later.
One other thing that helped me was, we were actually learning about restaurants at that point in French. So when we, it also helped with, when we took, like, our breaks for lunch, you've got to go to the café. And the food actually helped you, because you got to kind of see how it would work in a different language, even though you were just speaking it normally. Oh, yes, we did. We also wrote checks in different languages. Yeah. So in French, we learned about restaurants and how to write restaurant menus. And at BizTown, you saw the different menus up there. And it was cool.
That sounds fun.
So like, we had said, this is a long, our longest-running interdisciplinary unit in our middle school. And so, different years, we've done different things. Our science class has done the exploration for the STEM careers. And one, one of the years, we were able to pull the music class in, and they wrote jingles for their businesses. Because when you get to BizTown, there's a radio station, and the DJ does get to do advertisements. And so, one of the years, we had them record jingles, so that that could be their advertisement played at BizTown. And that was the year that we had general music. So we had, you know, all sixth graders in, in specific musics. So. Now we have this preparation that we have to do beyond just all the coursework. We have CEO/CFO training that the math teachers do, so we pull the CEOs and CFOs out and teach them how to lead a business, how to run kind of a staff meeting. And they learn how to do some of the pieces at BizTown before we get there and before their classmates do, so then they can teach their classmates in the actual preparation day. Another piece that got added this year by Mr. Westfall was that they called in the South St. Paul mayor, and the students were able to learn from him, speak with him. And I believe it was just the mayoral candidates.
There were, there were about fifteen, sixteen mayoral candidates, so it was really neat to have that experience.
Yeah, so just the mayoral candidates talked with our South St. Paul mayor and got to ask him questions. On the prep day, we changed our schedule. We have all sixth graders eat a lunch together. And then the rest of the day is set for business meetings that the CEO and CFOs are running. They're setting prices, they're creating their slogans, they're drawing up business signs, doing ads, and, and really getting to meet their business employees for the first time. So that's our prep day. And I think, I think the kids really enjoy that part. Did you want to add to that part, Julia?
Well, the, one thing I did like about how the CEOs and CFOs just kind of worked together first, was you got to, once you learned it, you got to kind of teach it to everyone else in your group, which is like, learning it again. So you got to, like, learn it twice, which made you understand it better.
Awesome. And this is one of our businesses, working together on that prep day. At the simulation day, we all head out to BizTown. They get to work, cash their paychecks, write checks, spend their cash, use debit cards. They have to figure out creative ways of advertising. If their products aren't selling, we had one girl, they had a rolling cart at BizTown, she went and got it, and she put all her products in there, and she just started pushing it around and, and shouting out, you know, her prices. And then they learn about making a profit. And they also get to vote there on different things that, that the city hall decides that they want to ask their citizens about. Rihanna, would you like to talk about your experience? Rihanna's an eighth grader who is so excited about BizTown that she wanted to come back to tell you about her experience.
Hi, my name is Rihanna. As you can tell, she already told you. I have a funny story, actually, for advertisement at BizTown that I had. Me and Callie's sister, Hayden, she was in my group at the time. And our business, we had coriolas, and we had, we had crayons and, like, other stuff to sell. And our stuff wasn't selling. So we had to come up with an idea, and the whole group, what we did is, because we were, like, in this little room, because it's like in, it's like a room like this, but it's like a little bit bigger. And we had, like, a table, and it was, like, in our business with our stuff, and it wasn't selling. So me and Hayden came up with this idea, and we took the table out, actually, out of the room, and we put it, like, outside, and we put, like, our stuff out. And, like, it was getting people's attention. And they came, and we sold out, like, within, like, ten minutes.
Like a sidewalk sale.
So that was pretty fun. It was, I remember, like, everything from BizTown. I feel like it's such a great experience. It's something, it's amazing to experience. I remember, like, the interviews and everything and how it went down. I was the CEO of the Taylor Communications. And I love, I'm a bossy person, people tell me that, so it was really fun. Bossy person. So it was fun to boss people around and tell them what to do.
It was a natural fit, right?
Yeah, it was perfect. I just told them. I actually brought my checkbook with me, because I saved it. I loved this out, it was so fun. So I have it right here, and the credit card, too. And we wrote everything down, the lemonade, like Julia said, when you have your breaks, because you get, like, color tags. And I had blue. And you, sometimes you don't get it with your friends, but it's really fun, because you get to meet new people as well. Like, you get to work with other classmates that you haven't worked with before. And you just, they put it, like, on this, I don't know if they did it, because every year, they do it different. But there was, like, a board, and they put the color, and they're like, "Oh, blue on break." And then you go on your break, and you can walk around and see your friends working, and it's really cool. Such, such a fun experience. Words cannot explain how exciting it is. And it's such a great program to have for the school, because every year, like I said, they add something new. So other kids get to experience other things. And it's so, so great, because it can add up, and you can tell people your stories. And it's really fun. I remember-
Do you feel me getting closer to you?
Yeah.
No, I don't want you to leave yet. I just want to remind some of the board members that Rihanna, every time I come, since I've become a principal, every time I've come to in front of the board, Rihanna has come, too. You might remember her from such topics as pods, what are they, web leaders, and now interdisciplinary projects. And I just want the students that are here to know that Rihanna is an expert at presenting to the board. And so I, I don't want you to think that you're bossy. I think, want you to think that you have leadership skills. Much, much like the fine board members that are in front of you and myself.
And maybe we'll see you right here.
The first time that I met Rihanna, she told me that she wanted to, to run for school board someday.
I'll remind you.
When you turn eighteen.
I'll be there.
Thank you for presenting today. And I don't think that I'm going to need you before you go to high school, but Mr. Ochaki will have your number.
Can we ask questions of the-
Yes. And I know that we have, I'm really sorry, because I know that we have, like, a few more.
No, no, no. You take your time.
Talk about the other projects.
This is our favorite part, so you take your time. Yeah.
Do I go back, or do I show them the gems?
Oh, show them your gems. So you gotta see her gems.
Mr. Castillo, I remember him telling us that we had to spend our money, because we can't go back and use the money in real life. So I actually, like, right when the buses were leaving, I was like, "I need to get something, I need to remember this moment." So I got gems, actually. So.
Nice.
No.
You know, if you were a true entrepreneur, I don't know what you paid for them, but I think you could double your money with that.
Probably could.
I've got a dollar in my pocket.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Your enthusiasm is contagious.
Do we have any questions for the BizTown folks? I have to say, I remember when Bubba came home for a few nights in a row, and he was like, "Here are the job descriptions." And we had to talk about skills, like, what his skills were with what he wanted to do. And he, you know, wanted to be a CFO, a CEO. And he was like, "Well, it says here that I have to be really good with numbers." Nope. Could I pick something else? So we went through, and we did talk about skills. So I think about the kids who were interviewing, and, you know, how you were able to, to help Austin steer to what his skills were, what his strengths were. And I just think that that's really great. So Bubba still talks about his experience, too, just like Joe. And maybe he will, too, in eighth grade.
I love that our new HR director is here tonight for the first time. Joel, wave your hand. He's, he's got to be getting goosebumps, thinking about the grow-your-own kind of potential we have for this, you know, setting people up for success in their interviews and being prepared.
Great. And then the next piece, the tubing?
Oh, we're going to do tubing last.
Oh, okay.
Visual art and Individuals and Societies.
Great.
We have one more student for BizTown.
Oh, great.
Hello, my name is-
Go closer to the mic, my friend, okay?
Hello, my, my, my name is Oliver. Okay. Hello, my name is Oliver Sustega Mendoza, and my experience at BizTown was different than usual, because you can really experience what it was like being an adult, you know, doing your checks, spending your money wisely. But I regret not spending my money wisely, because I didn't, I didn't really get to explore much time on my, on my break. And so I couldn't get a 3D-printed item, which I really wanted. And so my friend started bragging about it on the bus. And so we just played it while we got back to school. But it was really fun. I was CEO of the Wellness Center, of the Wellness Center. I really enjoyed it, enjoyed it, because I could really pay again against other companies, or they would charge me. And that really helped me, because I have, I have an interest in, with technology, or I have an interest with helping others. And I think it was really cool just going to BizTown in general.
Cool. Great. And now I know why you didn't get much time on your break, because you were a CEO. Right? You had to make sure everything was being taken care of before you could leave.
Yeah.
Just like real life.
Just like real life. Great, thank you.
Thank you for your night.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Molly Timmerman, and I'm the sixth grade visual and media arts teacher. And this is the first year that sixth grade has had every other day art for the whole year. And in Minnesota, we have an abundance of art, art history, art opportunities for careers, art opportunities for hobbies and exploration. And so it just made a lot of sense, combined with the Minnesota visual arts standards, to connect with Individuals and Societies, because Min- Min- Individuals and Societies focus in sixth grade is Minnesota history. So there is a specific art standard that's demonstrating the understanding of the personal, social, cultural, and historical context that influenced the visual arts, specifically with, and including the contributions of Minnesota American Indian tribes and communities. So at the very beginning of the year, I went to Mark Westfall, and I said, "Hey, what are you doing for Individuals and Societies? I'd like to connect with that." And so, since the beginning of the year, we've been talking about and exploring different things that we can do that tie the two curriculums together, so that the students can see their learning happening in more than one class.
We have, one of our projects in Minnesota Studies is to create a Dakota winter count. And a winter count is a way of recording history. So the Dakota didn't have a written language until Europeans, Europeans came. They didn't have a written language. They had an oral tradition and a pictorial tradition. So we incorporate that, and we adapt it to a sixth grade Minnesota-friendly level, and showcase how oral tradition, how written tradition, all encompasses together to share our stories. And so one of the things that we're going to be working with together in this next year is talking more about the history aspect in my class and the producing aspect in her class. So again, we can get multi-tiered lessons going in an interdisciplinary way. And it's going to be more meaningful for the students, because they're going to see it and experience it from two different perspectives, which is exactly what we try to do in a history class anyway, is look at it from multiple perspectives. So teaming up in this way is just natural, and it gets the students more actively involved as well.
And then they can see, well, they're, they're active. I know when we were doing that, we, we started small this year with dream catchers and woodland-style paintings. And when I, when we started the dream catchers unit, they would walk in, and they'd be like, "This isn't Westy's class, you're not Westy," which was kind of funny. But then we would talk about some of the things that the Native Americans did, or what they already knew about the Native Americans. And they would just have this list of things. And one day, somebody said, "Well, did you know that they, they, they made lacro- they started lacrosse?" And I didn't. But at the time, we were making the dream catchers, and you can see the webbing that they used. So then we talked about how the webbing that they were making in the dream catchers was probably very similar to the webbing that they made in their lacrosse sticks. And so, as Mark said, next year, we're going to delve more into this. And there's a little bit of a timeline that we've started, where in early September, we're going to have, I'm going to have the students make autobiographical island maps. And that will help them with their maps, their map studies in Individuals and Societies. And then moving on into story quilts, which brings in some of the Hmong history to the classrooms. But that then also helps the students to be thinking about what, where, their path, like, how did they get to Minnesota? What are some important events in their life? And then they'll be able to apply those things to their winter count, once we get to their winter count.
And I, I don't, I don't want to surprise you, Naveya and Jeffrey, but I did get Naveya and Jeffrey a little bit ready. So if you guys wanted to ask Naveya and Jeffrey questions about their dream catchers or their woodland creatures, they are totally ready to share. Because I've met with them this morning, and they, they are, they have their memories jogged. So you guys could come on up.
Did you bring them?
No dreams tonight.
So, Naveya, would you tell us a little bit about what you remember from making your dream catcher?
I remember, oh, sorry. From the dream catchers, I remember, like, that there's, like, a super important reason to, like, why they made it. And there's, like, they added, like, not dreams, they added the beads in the middle to represent, I think it was a spider. And the webbing, I really thought it was super cool. And I think it's really cool about, like, how fast they can make them. And it's, like, a really cool thing, I guess.
And Jeffrey, do you want to talk a little bit about your, your woodland creature and what you made when you were working on that?
I don't really remember that one that much.
Okay. Anything else you want to share? You told me you still had your dream catcher.
I do. I don't-
What, what made you want to keep it?
It looked cool, and I made it with my own design. Thought about it, created it with my own imagination. I thought about it, it was really cool, and I kept it.
Okay.
Nice.
And also, Jeffrey really cut on to how to do the weaving really quickly. And so then he was very willing to go around and help his classmates learn how to do it. And that was very neat, too.
Very nice.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions before we move on to the science of snow tubing? All right.
You know, I would like to take, Leah, I would like to take maybe two minutes-
Sure.
-because this is about our students here. How many of you were CEOs or CFOs at BizCamp? Would you stand up?
Yeah.
Move, move forward a little bit, to get together. Now, I don't, I've always wanted to be an entrepreneur. And I have an idea. And my idea is, I want to sell advice for a- And my idea is I wanna sell advice for a price. Okay? And I have a couple of questions about advice for a price as a inspiring entrepreneur. First of all, what's wrong with my business? Now, the way it's gonna work is you're gonna ask me a question and I'm gonna give you advice. And what I'm gonna charge is whatever you think it's worth. Now, what's wrong with my business plan so far?
Well, they could take, they could take advantage of it.
How so?
Because you're saying that they need to like pick the price, kind of. So they might take advantage of it and think it like, so at the end of the night, you might not have a profit.
So that I could interpret that if my advice wasn't good, it probably wasn't worth anything?
Maybe.
I think that's a pretty good answer. Okay, I have one more question before I let you go. And you can look at yourselves on TV there, too. My other question is, when I go into this advice for a price, how long should I give it before I either continue to expand and grow or just close the doors and say, I can't make any money at this? How long a time should I give it to be successful? Does anybody have an opinion on that?
I mean, I wouldn't keep it up too long because like.
Well, I mean, two months, two days, two years?
Uh, I think two months is too long.
Two months is too long.
But maybe give it a week? Yeah.
Give it a week? So what I'm hearing right now, being a aspiring entrepreneur is advice for a price. We might as well just take it right now then. But I really enjoyed talking to you guys and thanks for everything. Thanks for sharing with us, okay?
Keep your day job, Bill.
Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. So this year, this is Mr. Gabe Thompson. He wanted and was really excited about doing a science of snow tubing interdisciplinary unit with science and math. So he brought the idea to me and asked for some curriculum writing time to do a unit with Michael Qualheim, who is not here tonight. And they wanted to plan this unit where they would do lessons, learning about physics and math. And then they would end up going to one of the resorts or hills, Buck Hill. They were looking at variety of ones. That was the hardest part, was probably finding a spot that would take us for this. And I'll let him talk about that. But it was a really exciting unit that they wanted to start. So the really cool thing about interdisciplinary units is they come up with the ideas, they meet with other subject groups, and then they need to have the time in order to plan the units and then to bring other people into that planning because it does obviously involve all the students.
Hi, Gabe Thompson. So yeah, this is actually a project I've done for many years when I was with other schools. And we were big about what can we do to connect a lot of our curriculum? And so surprisingly, I have like 10 different ones to do. This one was the simplest and I normally work with Wild Mountain because it's a very enclosed area. It's separate from the ski lodge. Like, we get our own building when we're there. But busing is really a huge issue, as you may know. And so an hour and 20-minute bus ride there and then back would have left us maybe an hour and a half at the hill. And that's just not enough time to enjoy what we're gonna do. So Buck Hill was able to take us and they're obviously much closer, maybe only half an hour. And this is their advertisement, actually. So what was neat about this project is that the, the, the hill had not, it had discontinued it. So I had to pester them quite a bit to like, no, I know what I'm doing. Let me, let me help you revitalize it. And then they, after calling and calling and pestering, they were like, okay. And then we helped them find their equipment, 'cause they didn't even know where they had put their equipment. But it turns out they had like wonderful equipment. They had radar guns, they had awesome like angle finders. They had all these cool things that the Wild Mountain didn't have. And the only thing we couldn't do there was like the chain links of tubes, 'cause they had to be safe. So I'm a pretty big guy. I'm over 250 pounds. And when I go down on a tube, I can reach all the way to the top of the safety. So if you put any more weight, which is what like a train of 10 would be, be over 1,000 pounds, all of a sudden, you're probably gonna go through the safety back. So that's why, we understood why they couldn't do that. But it was, it was really neat to do. So they, they had a lot of the stuff there and we used some of their curriculum and then combined it with some of ours. And we actually watered it down a little bit because there were so many logistics. This was the first field trip that the eighth graders had taken, really, since the pandemic. That like no field trip had been taken for like two and a half years or two years. So just even like health forms getting in and everything. So we, we really wanted to make it like where they were learning some really quality stuff. And that was, all that planning we did before was really important because we were like, what, what's reasonable when we're there? 'Cause normally, we go to like nine stations, we're doing all kinds of things with the kids, we have lots of parent volunteers. This time, we were like, let's just do four stations. Let's keep it a little simpler. Let's, let's see what we need to change, 'cause I had never been to Buck Hill for this tubing. So I was like, I don't know what's gonna go wrong. So let's keep it simple in case something goes wrong, we know what to do for next time. And then we figured out where we could have put more stations when we were there, so that was really nice. So this was kind of like the planning session, like we were looking, what standards are we covering? So for like the math side, which is what I do, we talked a lot about functionality. And like if something goes in, what's coming out? And then how to map that on a graph. So this was right in that timing of what we were doing. We were doing input, output, graphing, all those things. And then on the science side, this is where they were doing like field tests, collecting data and evidence to support claims they were gonna make. And then a lot about forces. So they looked at like speed and time and distance comparisons. And then in the math, we enforced like, here's how you manipulate a multi-variable set. So if you wanted to know speed, here's what you would do with distance and time. If you wanna know distance, here's what you do to speed and time. And we all talked about the triangle, so you might have seen it in the science. And then in the math, we reinforced that part, gave them some of that. So the preparation before was a good amount for both math and science. On the after side, which I'll show you in a second here, there was more of the science because we didn't wanna overload them with too much like data collecting there because again, we were just doing four stations. We normally have like four different types of speed stations and we only did one. And again, if we had done all those other ones, we would have, we would have been able to do bi-variant data, which is scatter plots and like looking at that, which is a big eighth grade standard. There's like 10 questions on the MCAs for, you know, it really ties in well to what we do, so. Click. There we go. So these were the four stations that we did. We did mass data of the hill. That was like angle finding and some of the, like where's the height? How much distance was the hill? Friction, they actually do a friction test there, which is really neat. And they have a special device for it. And then the average speed, so that was that one speed we did. But we, we wanted to do instantaneous speed, interval speed, maximum speed. We couldn't do all those 'cause it's a lot of setup that we just didn't have time to go do 'cause we were so unfamiliar with what's going on. But now we have more information, so we're good on that. This is an example of like zone three, this is the friction test. So you can see on that left side, that's where they have like what they're supposed to calculate, like write down and collect their data, and then they would go into the science and then talk about it. And what they're doing right there is they're pulling on the tube and they have a special device that measures the amount of force they have to pull on the tube. So we put it on a mat, which has a lot of friction, and they have to yank the tube and then drag it. And then they do it when it's on the snow, they yank it and drag it and then calculate the difference of those two and see what does friction do. And on the hill, it didn't show up, but on the hill, to slow some people down, like me, they put increments of these mats down so that the friction would actually slow them down when they got to the bottom of the hill, so they wouldn't go over the safety back on there. So this is us in zone four, we were doing our speed. So there's a student there writing down the data as she's collecting from somebody coming down. Her teammates are coming down. And then a teacher, that was me, is going like, go, and then they come and then they start their timer. And then there was, you can't see them, but there's another student on the left there who's got a radar gun calculating the speed that way so we can compare how accurate it is us doing it this way and how accurate is it with the actual speed gun. Then when we're in the class, that was the average speed. You can see like on the left again, that's what they were kind of recording. And then on the right, that's what they were doing in science was like, hey, this is what it should look like. Let's go through it together. And so, I don't know if it's showing this part. But the right part, which says zone four average speed, so that's when they're, they're collecting and gathering the data and then actually applying it and saying, this is what it meant in the classroom. So on the back end, there was that. Wow, that is one bag. Some great things that really happened, it was, was a ton of great anticipation and excitement about the math and the physics of the trip. And of course, it's a snow tubing trip, so everybody's like, we get to go tubing? We were able to gather high-quality data and then use that data. We had zero behavior incidents. And I know that when you take 200-plus kids to a snow tubing, there's always, and there, there's a chalet, you know? There's three different restaurants that they can explore and all that stuff. And nobody got lost, nobody was reported as doing the wrong thing. And so it was really nice in that way. We did follow-up classes and calculations that went well. And we thought about a lot of new ideas for the next time. And then some, the, the three hours was perfect. It was just the right amount. We were able to do all our stuff. And then they still had about an hour and a half of like fun time. Things that were, that we're gonna change for next time is, we really wanna give students the option for mass. We, we actually did this there, but initially, we were gonna have students weigh and house. And we said, you know what, you can put any number you want between this because obviously, there's some sensitivity with weight sometimes and we didn't want that to be a roadblock. So we just said, just pick a, pick a number, we don't care, and then go with that. Or if you wanna know the, the true, if you don't care, you can weigh yourself. So we had that option at the station for the students to do that. We wanna create bi-variant data. Again, that's the scatter plot stuff. We wanted to create more zones, and these are just some examples, but max speed and a roll speed, instantaneous speed, acceleration, additional forces. We'd like parent volunteers. Normally, I bring four or five parents, but with being the first field trip and background checks and like just me being new to this school in that way, I wasn't 100% there. So we just, we were like, let's just do four stations. And then the Buck Hill versus Wild Mountain, I really would love to take it to Wild Mountain, but it, it would cost more to go there. And that's always an issue because you'd have to pay for buses that are not our buses. 'Cause unless we magically get a bunch more bus drivers, which I don't, doesn't sound like that's happening. And then we wanted to create our rubric and assessments, and that's another thing that takes a lot of time to do. So, yeah, but it was, I have one testimonial. How was the trip?
It was real fun.
It, it really was. I mean, the kids really enjoyed it. And there were so many kids who have never been to a ski mountain, never been to a snow tubing, never been to a chalet. And we're like, this is so cool. So they're just running around learning about it, so.
You didn't mention how cold it was that day.
It was not that cold.
One of the coldest days.
It was like 15 degrees, but there was a little wind, a little windy.
It was windy.
But, I mean, they, they, they were great. They thought it was just awesome. And whipping down the hill, they were totally fine, so.
So could you connect the science of snow tubing with the insurance agents at BizTown? And you could talk about risk. And you could talk about like, how do you analyze the risk? Could be an interesting interdisciplinary unit.
And in the past, yeah. Sometimes I do ski clubs and in the past, yeah, we canceled. It's just, we tell the kids, it's just too cold. They're like, no, we're gonna be okay. No, you're not gonna be okay, so.
Freeze your nose off.
Yeah. And I, I, I know we've gone over time and I'm so glad that we, when I first met Brian and I knew I was gonna be coming up for April and I told Lisa and Brian like, I'm sorry, I'm really having a hard time getting staff. And I wanted them to do this thing about collaboration. And it's weird if I don't bring in, you know, a bunch of staff, that, that's strange 'cause we had game with softball and track and golf. There was a whole list of things and then weather happened. And so then all of a sudden, people were like, yeah, we can come. And then I didn't wanna say, well, sorry, I don't really need you all. And everybody is so happy to tell us how wonderful it is. And I'm so proud of the work that they're doing. And the, the kids are happy to have the interdisciplinary projects. And so I'm just, I'm proud of the work that we're doing. I'm excited to get to continue the interdisciplinary work. And I know Melissa is excited to continue to schedule the work. And so just thank you so much for having us.
Yeah, I just wanna see if anybody has questions. Any questions, board members?
I did. I, I was just curious, kids, the one, when you were doing interviews and talking about careers, different things, Nikki, you said you picked like three careers. I was just curious, which ones did you want or which ones are you looking forward to? Careers in the future for you?
I thought it'd be cool to work at Delta Airlines, the construction place which I got, or the cafe.
Good.
I really wanted to work like at a bank, 'cause I really liked the numbers. And I wanted to work like with Taylor Communications and that's the job I wish I got.
Cool. Interesting, good.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I don't remember what job I got, but I think it was Delta Airlines. We didn't make much profit with secret agent, so I kinda missed out there.
Waiting for your break.
Okay, and I went to buy all the stuff, kind of cashed out. And, um, it was pretty fun, so.
Good. Good to hear.
Yeah, if you guys could come up, we have a, oh, oh, sorry, honey.
I wanted to do, I wanted the ma, the major, the mayor, media, mayor. And then I think I signed up for the cafe, 'cause I like, like cashier, like I'm a, like, that's a great job. And I don't remember those jobs, but I remember those two. I remember when I got the Taylor Communications, those are my guys, that would be fun, because I didn't sign up. But when I got there, like it was, like everything was so different.
That sometimes happens with real jobs. That you don't really know.
I just had a question for the teachers about interdisciplinary. You had talked about there being a main concept. And do teachers actually have like time to plan together and share those ideas? So that's, okay.
We don't. I mean, we, we did our planning in the summer time. Like, we were offered, hey, if you wanna do an interdisciplinary, this is when you can plan it. And finding time during was like crazy stressful.
Yeah.
But we just, we ended up eating our own time and doing some of that, so.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah. I mean, we kinda beg and borrow from different spots. I think I was able to give one day on a Wednesday, like we had one hour on that one Wednesday, but it was tight.
What I mean Wednesday is when we have professional discretion. And so Mark and I have been using that time to, to meet and plan.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Well, you guys are going places, I'm telling you. I'm impressed. I love your confidence.
Yes.
You know, and your, your openness to learning new things and thinking about things in a different way. You know, just being critical thinkers. It just, you just made my day. So thank you so much for being here. And I have a little wristband for you if you'd like to come up. It's just a little Packer pride. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming. I did about school.
Yeah, yeah.
Bye.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Could you, one of the boys left early.
For the CEO.
Thank you, thank you.
Fantastic.
Nice to see you, Melissa. It's been, been a while since we've seen you.
Thank you.
As always, we've said that the, the kids are our favorite part. I was outreach and said, you know, what, what do you think the board would wanna hear? And I said, we wanna hear from the kids. Bring them, bring them all. So I'm glad that they did. That was really fun.
I think it's also really cool, 'cause then you can connect their sixth grade BizTown to their careers in the school or the, the, what is it? It's not careers in the school, the entrepreneurship program that they can do then as high school students that can then lead to, so it can all flow, flow together through their, through their experience.
And I loved how Kaylee said too, like when she got her real checkbook, she knew what to do with it.
Yeah.
I mean, think about those, that, that full loop. All right, moving on to public listening session. There were no public listening session submissions this week. And then our next report, we just wanted to, John, why don't you explain this? 'Cause it was your idea.
I think it's important for our community to know that there's a lot more work that the board is doing than what we see just directly here on screen when we do our monthly reports. So one of the other things, in addition to the committees that we sit on as a board, we also have kind of our work sessions and our planning meetings that happen just before the board meeting, which are also open to the public as well. But sometimes in our public board meeting, we don't get to kind of fully summarize some of the things that we are. of the things that we are planning and the discussions. And so we thought we'd build into our board meetings going forward, just a little update about some of the business that is sort of happening at that time. So things that did not fit on the agenda this month, that we spent some time discussing, that I think are important for the direction of the board. One of them was community engagement. Nikki, do you want to kind of talk about some of the things that are going on? Linda, what's, sorry?
Yep. So one of the things that we talked about in the committee, the whole meeting, was our community engagement committee. And Wendy and Nikki and I are on that, along with Lisa, and Dr. Zambrino attends as well. And this year, what we're really focusing on is making sure that we're being visible in the community. We want to make sure that the community knows what school board members are doing, the work that, that we're doing at meetings. If you're curious about school board work, we're open to all of that information. Plus, we want to make sure that we are in places where the community is at, so that you feel like you can come talk to us. You know, talk to us about what your kids are doing in school. Talk to us about the things that you're concerned about, or that you'd like to see more of. Like, we want to, we want to just make sure that we're out and about. And so what we've developed with Lisa's help is a community calendar of events, so that we can, as school board members, all be present at these great things. You know, the Packer Pride, is it Pride for Stride?
Stride for Pride.
I was so close. Stride for Pride, you know, Capoja Days, all sorts of things. Being with the, at the Senior Center, at Central Square. So we'll have that calendar available for the public, so that you can see where we'll be. And just look for us, because we're going to get some school board fancy T-shirts, so you'll know where we are. We won't be hiding. So that's our report. And, oh, there was one more thing that we talked about in the community, the whole.
Yeah, thank you, Chardeas. Yes, we did talk a little bit about just beginning some thinking around our strategic planning. And so had, the district's had a long partnership with Dennis Cheesebrow of Teamworks International. And so he is absolutely interested in partnering with us and engaging with us in that process that will, of course, involve other stakeholders. But just initial conversation around that, and we've got the agreement to move forward with that, and I'll come back with more updates in the future.
Great.
Great.
And you're next up as well to do highlights from around the district.
All right, I'm going to see if it works from here. If the technology allow, agrees, so. I think they have the slide deck. There we go. All right, so first thing, just to look at some of the upcoming events that we have going on. We have Fair for All and the Shoe Bus coming to Central Square Community Center. So that's actually tomorrow from four to six. The Fair for All is a pop-up grocery program that stops at Central Square once a month. And when I was there visiting with our Senior Center Board, they were talking about, and Inspector Felton was there as well, just how great the, the deals are and the quality of the food. So a mix of vegetables and fruits and vegetables. And then this one's hot by, they have pork tenderloin, so if somebody's interested in that. And, and then for the first time, we're going to have the Shoe Bus there as well. And so the, and that's during that same event, so the food and the Shoe Bus. And that's through Shoe Away Hunger. And so it's an opportunity to buy new or very gently-used shoes. And then all the profits go to Good in the Hood, which is a local meals program. So that's tomorrow from four to six at Central Square. This came up just a moment ago. We have the Stride for Packer Pride coming up on May 21st at 9:00 a.m. That's a 5K fun run, and I'm excited, because this will be my first time getting to participate. But I understand it's been going on for like, 13 years, and it's generated around $100,000 for students to participate in extracurricular activities. So we hope to see a lot of folks there, and hoping by then, the weather will have changed for something more spring-like. All right, then we have our Silver Apple nominations. We mentioned that last time, but those are still open. And that's an opportunity for students to nominate any South St. Paul staff member, sharing information about what quality their favorite employee has that make them so special and have a positive impact on life. And so that's not just teachers, we know that all the adults in the system play, you know, such an important role in the lives of our students and their experience in our schools. And applications are due back to the foundation by the 30th. So this is our last week for nominations. Summer programming, our community ed does a great job of providing programming. Their, their line is Birth to Earth, but so Birth Through Adulthood, there'll be, I wish Jean was here to share that album, yeah, right? So she is working with her team, Jean Zender and team do a great job planning things all the way for all age groups. So that information on summer learning is available at the, at the sspaps.org website. But again, there's things for early learning, and there's Summer Learning Academy, where kids get enrichment in the summer, and again, adult opportunities as well. And then next week is Teacher Appreciation Week officially, that's a nationally-recognized, you know, week to honor our, our teachers. But what we want to make sure is we encompass all of our employees in that. And so next week, we will make a point of pausing to honor all the great work that's happening in the district. We know with coming off of the pandemic and everything that our staff have been doing, they are just giving it their all. And so it's a great opportunity to pause and just make sure people feel appreciated. We know there's been a lot of turnover in a lot of industries, and reading a lot of articles that I've read, one of the things that I've seen over and over again is if you want to keep people, have a culture where people feel appreciated. So that's something that I will definitely work to model here, and I know you all is bored, I'm seeing the heads, heads nodding, but we want to make sure our staff feel appreciated for all the great things they do. And then here's just a quick look at some of the things going on around the district. We had Earth Day trash pickup, so Lincoln Center students in Mrs. Thompson's, Ms. Seberg, and Mrs. Roaring's classes went out and picked up trash around the school and in parks in the area in honor of Earth Day. This one was interesting for me, I didn't realize this was going on. So we have, and second graders at Capoja are seeing how worms help in, in breaking down materials, so they're composting, they have compost bins where they're able to put in fruit and vegetable and other compostable waste. And so they're watching the worms break that down in real time, so might have to stop by and take a look at that. I'm, I kind of go, hmm, does that have a funky smell or what? I'll have to go and find out, I haven't seen that yet. We have an art club at Capoja, so fifth graders at Capoja interested in art are getting extra practice after school. So that's Thursdays after school, you can see them here working with clay and, and making sculptures, so just a great opportunity. We know how important the arts are in education, and wanting to extend opportunities for our students to participate there. We also have first graders here, this is them learning about, it's kind of a small picture, but Ted Harrison, if you haven't seen his work, Google, it's very vibrant, but the kids are just spot-on with what they're doing. So it's, it's real, simple shapes and lines, but vivid, bright colors. And so the kids, I was impressed when I looked at his work and compared it to what our kids are doing, it's neat to see that, so. Great work happening there. And then our high school art class as well. They are here working on some clay projects, and it was, these are bisque fired, so it's fired, now it's at a porcelain state, and they're applying their glaze. So great opportunities for kids to engage with arts and, and do some hands-on learning. And then just a quick look at some of the important dates coming up. So we have this week, on Thursday, is High School Family Connections. And that's like, parent-teacher conferences, for those who don't necessarily know that term, chance to get families connected with schools. On May 30th is no school, and we'll have Memorial Day there. And then our last day of school is June 8th with graduation on the 9th. So I keep thinking that the end of the year is going to surprise us, because it's been so cold and snowy, and we're not really realizing, like, we're flying right along through spring here, it's going to be May, and we're going to be hitting the end of the year soon. But it's a lot of exciting things going on. And then just as always, a reminder, where to find materials on our district website if folks want to, I, I know you already talked about as a board, having people engage and know what you do, and they're, all that information is public information, it's always accessible on our website.
Great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next in our agenda are the consent items, and as a reminder, consent, consent items include bills payable, claims, and our staffing report. Do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Thanks, Wendy. Any discussion? Great, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thanks. We have no policies to review this meeting, so we can move on to our business items. All right. I think that was under consent.
It was, okay.
No problem. So business items, I am looking for a motion to approve the resolution proposing to place individuals with continuing contract rights on unrequested leave of absence. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thanks. And I think we have Brady Hoffman, Finance Director, to provide some discussion.
Yep, so on April 11th, the school board approved the 2223 Resolution discontinuing and reducing positions, which included the FIAD department. The attached resolution proposes to place one continuing contract FIAD teacher on unrequested leave of absence. The individual proposed to be placed on ULA may request a hearing before the school board, provided this request is submitted in writing within 14 days of this notice. Administration is recommending the approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion? Dr. Zambrino?
You know, I, like I shared before, I think, you know, people are our greatest resource, so it's always difficult when we have situations like this. But just for a point of clarity for people to know, if, if teachers have achieved tenures, well, we think if they're on a continuing contract, they have rights to a position. In this case, what happens is that we, we have to make some reductions aligned to our enrollment, like we've talked about in the past. And that means we just don't have the, the number of kids we, that would sustain the number of PE teachers we have. So if a teacher's placed on an unrequested leave of absence, they still are one of us. We don't have a position at the time, but if we have a vacancy that opens up, they would have rights back into that position, and that's in place for up to five years. So just a little explanation around what that, what that means for folks.
Thank you. Anybody on the board, any discussion?
No, just that it's, I mean, a really challenging decision for us. It's not something we relish doing, and we value the years of service that, that teacher has provided us.
Absolutely. Lisa, will you please call a roll?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Aron?
Yes.
Chardeas?
Yes.
Six years.
That motion carries. Next on our list is, I'm looking for a motion to approve the acceptance of gifts resolution.
So moved.
Great, second?
Second.
Thank you. And I believe Brady is here to explain that as well.
Yep, so per school board policy, the school board may receive and accept, for the benefit of the district, gifts and donations to the school district. Included in this resolution are three donations to benefit the secondary robotics, the girls' golf team, and the secondary theater. Administration recommends the approval of this resolution.
Great, board members, any discussion? All right, Lisa, can you call that roll?
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Aron?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Chardeas?
Yes.
Six years.
That motion carries. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 202223 Kids' Choice Fees. Do I have a motion to move this, or do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Thanks, second?
Second.
Fantastic. Any discussion? Oh, we're good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next on our list is a motion to approve the facility use fees, Appendix Three of Policy 902. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, looking for a motion to approve termination of the East Metro Integration District 6067 Joint Powers Agreement effective June 30th, 2023. Dissolution of organizations on this date is contingent upon approval of the termination by all member districts prior to July 1st, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, and then discussion. I'm going to take this one.
Yeah, well, I'll take a little piece of it, but you've got so much passion for it. So just context-wise, as part of our integration work, we have been, part of what I would, you know, consortium is probably the best way to think about it. It used to be called Emid, East Metro Integration District, but it is doing business as Equity Alliance Minnesota. And they've done some amazing partnering in the districts that we partner with. There's a group of districts in the consortium. It is, unfortunately, the Equity Alliance has struggled with finances and sustainability has just come into question. And so in, in moving together with one voice, the member districts are putting forward a, a motion to move towards dissolution at June of 2023. So not this June, but a year from June, just in, in anticipation that it may not be a sustainable operation moving forward.
Yeah. And that's based on Equity Alliance's Budget Director, that's, you know, based on their numbers, so not anything that, that we've made up. I, I would also like to say that, that even though this is for the future, there is still a lot of planning that's happening in Equity Alliance. Great, great things, great collaborations that are happening. They're really excited about the future of partnerships, and so this may be the ending of one chapter, but it's the beginning of, of new stories. So yeah, thank you for that, Dr. Zambrino.
I also think this is in no way a reflection of equity work not being a priority for the district. I think that is still very much a priority and fore-focused on us.
Yeah, and for all the member districts, actually, yeah. That's a great call-out, thanks. So I think I got the, maybe the discussion, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And then the last thing in our business items is a motion to approve the resolution to amend the Joint Powers Agreement governing the East Metro Integration District 6067. Do we need to read that resolution, Lisa, or we?
No.
No, okay, great. Do I have a motion to move this resolution for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? Lisa, will you please call that roll?
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Raj?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Aron?
Yes.
Chardeas?
Yes.
At six years.
That motion carries. Whew, wow, that was a lot of items. We are now at our informational items, board reports, any committee updates, any place around the district where you've seen a passion that you wanted to call out, and we can start on this end tonight with Bill.
I have nothing tonight, Chair.
Thanks. Monica?
The only thing I would encourage to all South St. Paul families is that the legislature is chugging toward their last month of, of session, and if you have opinions about how we should spend our state surplus, perhaps to benefit education, I would encourage all of you to contact, you know, Representative Hanson, Senator Klein, Senator Bigum, and other representatives in the area, and express your feelings about how we should spend our money to support our schools.
Thanks, John.[1732.02]
South St. Paul Open met this last week and are continuing their planning for the summer golf tournament that's coming up. Major fundraiser for the Open and the boosters and the activities that our district supports. So watch for more information on that. We also have prom coming up shortly, so wishing everyone a safe and fun prom as well.
Great. I heard kids talking about it this weekend. Yeah. Where, are you going to pick me up? Am I going to pick you up? Whose mom wants to take pictures? Whose mom is going to cry? All right, I don't have anything tonight. Nikki?
I don't have anything tonight.
Wendy, you might have something.
I have a few things. Few dozen. Actually, just coming up with, with a little over six weeks of school left for this year. Thank heavens I have a big calendar at home where I can write all this stuff down to keep track. So there's a lot of wonderful, wonderful things as board members that we get to attend. So I'll just read a list here of things that I've got coming up. As was mentioned by Mr. Roche, that prom is this, this Saturday. Looking forward to the kids, wish them safe event. And then also this week on Friday is the mock car crash being held at the secondary building on the football field, which is a great opportunity for our students to attend. I know I, in the past, I have seen it a couple times. They discuss safety for students. And I want to put out a huge thank you to all the community members that also will attend. Some police department and ambulances may be there, fire department may be there. So it's, it's great for them to attend this event and we thank them for coming. Also coming up at, at the secondary building at the high school on, coming up here is the, in the theater, theater department for grade six through eight, the CSI Wonderland, which will be the spring play. The tickets are on sale. The play is being held on May 19th to the 21st. For more information, feel free to go on the district website where you can access ability to purchase the tickets online. And also coming up, another fundraiser for Lincoln Center on Tuesday, May 10th, at Culver's Restaurant in West St. Paul from four to seven PM. They will be making donations to the school from your purchases at, at Culver's. You can eat in, take out, drive through, whatever you want to do. Just you have to let them know obviously where you're from and have a, usually there's a picture that you can show on your phone that gives the approval. So if you can, support Lincoln Center on May 10th. That's great at Culver's. And as board members, as I mentioned, attending these spring, early summer events are just so, so wonderful. Coming up now on Wednesday, May 4th, is our Activities Athletic Banquet being held at the secondary building at six o'clock. And then coming up on Wednesday, May 5th, the Education Foundation Scholarship Banquet will be held. Look, always looking forward to that, which they will be giving away about $440,000 this year to our students.
May 11th. You said the 5th.
Well, May, oh, May the 5th.
5th, okay, maybe I misunderstood. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, May 11th at six o'clock at the high school. And then as was mentioned earlier too, Saturday, May 21st, the Stride for Packer Pride. I want to put out a personal thank you to the Schultz Kunehan's family that is in charge of this. Pete Schultz, who is a member of our staff. And Ann Kunehan and her family, Ann is a former board member, very active in our community. Just want to thank them so much for doing this for the last several years. And I've been volunteering with them also for several years. And I'll be at the registration table again, helping there this year. And also, as I serve on the Senior Center Board of Directors, coming up on Wednesday, May 18th, at the Senior Center, it is our fashion show, our spring fashion show. So if you're a senior member of the community, anyone over 55 years old is considered a senior at the, at our senior center at Central Square. You can, you can attend our fashion show. There is, we do serve a lunch. It's catered by Magnolia's Restaurant. The cost is $17, but it's always a wonderful, wonderful luncheon. And I've been a model there for the last several years too. So it is, it is a lot of fun. So as I said, many events coming up. And as board members, looking forward to attending these is just a truly, truly gift. So thank you.
I'll put that senior center on my calendar for six years from now. I'll be there. I'll be there. I'm going to model. All right, so that's it for our agenda tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, April 25th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Nikki.
Second.
Thanks. John, any discussion? That motion carries. So the meeting is adjourned at, oh, that clock's even smaller.
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty PM. Look at, it's like miniature.